Sorry. Um. And lastly, when we're not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken. Uh, I will.
So welcome, everybody. I'm calling a meeting, the regular meeting of the city council of Montesereno to order at seven oh two P M. We're going to start with the flag of allegiance, which we always start with. And today is a very special one. Um Charlotte Thomas, staff member of Montesereno recently became a U S citizen. So carried recently. I am proud to lead us in the flag of allegiance.
Councilmember Turner. Here. Councilmember Mekich.
Present.
Councilmember Lawrie.
Present.
Vice Mayor Gray.
Here.
And Mayor Wolschraeber.
President. Next, I'm calling the agenda orders of the day. The mayor or majority of the council by vote may change the order of business. Anybody who wants to change the order of the agenda today?
If we, I believe most of the people in the room are here for Dave's S curve, so if we could start off with that, then we don't have to make them wait through everything.
Yeah, I think it's fine with me. Is that okay with everyone? Yeah, okay, we'll do that. That means we will immediately move on to. Item number three on the agenda, which is consideration of Dave's Avenue S curve safety measures. Now. I personally live within five hundred feet of the area under discussion, so. By law, I have to recuse myself from the meeting and cannot participate or vote in a meeting, and I will now disappear from the room.
All right.
And the vice mayor will take over the meeting.
Thanks. Do you want to mention your U S speaker? Do you want to let them know you're going to speak as the president? Oh.
All right, so we are on item number three, where we are going to. Take a look at the recommendations for the Dave's Avenue. S curve, and can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, council persons. Um, tonight, we're here to discuss the, of course, Dave's Avenue S curve. Thank you all for coming tonight. Uh, some of this will be old news to you, but I'm just going to go through the whole report, so everybody's up to speed on where we're at today. As far as, um, can we place the plans up on the screen, please, so they have a reference? As far as background, the Dave's Avenue S curve project originated from multiple safety concerns. Several vehicular accidents have occurred from westbound traffic entering the bottom of the curbs at high speeds. As a result, all the mailboxes, pavement, and curbs have been damaged. Fortunately, no serious injuries to drivers, pedestrians, or cyclists have occurred today. As a result of past incidents, additional concerns were discussed regarding traffic calming mechanisms to reduce speeds. Protect pedestrians and cycling. Staff contracted with a regular traffic engineering consultant, Kimberly Horn. And associates to design and provide a multitude of options to enhance safety along the corridor. These measures included striping to narrow the width of pebble lanes, striped bike lanes. Vertical green ballards or colored ballards, zebras, bumps. And signage. Any of those measures or variety of those measures would improve the current condition. Per city council direction in April of twenty twenty four, staff scheduled meetings with the council appointed Dave's Avenue ad hoc committee. Uh, those council persons included, uh, Ms. Turner, Mr. Megachuck. And the Better Streets Commission. Staff has also met with adjacent property owners, which several of them are here tonight. In January and in March to receive comment and input as previously reported to council. Feedback from the three groups is summarized below. First, I'm going to discuss the local neighborhood. Two outreach events were hosted at City Hall. The first event took place in early January. The second meeting was held on the evening of March fourth. First meeting had four participants, and the second meeting had a lot, much larger number registered, sixteen local residents, including the local school principal. Each element of the safety plan, which is behind me on the screen, was presented to the attendees. Every attendee. And was asked and contributed to the discussion. And commented on which safety elements they were in favor of. And the following polls summarized their feedback. As far as speed tables were concerned, a hundred percent were in support. As far as ballers, they were a hundred percent opposed to them. Uh, extension of sidewalk, uh, there was a hundred percent support. A flashing speed sign had a hundred percent support. And as far as striping, the majority opposed and thought that it would not be effective at this time. Additional input outside the S curve scope was included and interested in adding an additional stop sign, perhaps at Equestrian Way, which would require a warrant study. The second meeting concerning the Dave's Avenue Ad hoc Committee. Uh, staff met with the ad hoc committee on April eleventh. And, uh, member Turner's comments, she summarized pretty succinctly into three main items. She stated that staff should prioritize improvements in phases. Number two, the project needs to stay within the approved budget of sixty thousand dollars. And number three, staff should acknowledge and accept the input from the residents. The other ad hoc member, Mr. Megcheck's comments. I've summarized below. The emphasis of the improvements are for speed and reduction of public safety. He also stated that staff should consider all aspects of the Kimley Moore design as previously provided to city council. He considered a phased approach is acceptable with the multiple elements within the Kimley Moore design, including multicolored ballards that can be switched out per public direction as an option. Striping and lane delineators, which we call zebras or those diagonal bumps, aren't effective solution to reduce speed and direct traffic out of the bike lanes. And finally, the installation of lane delineating reflectors, white and red, could be used to provide a feedback and lane guidance. Um, laid up the, um, good E S curve. Lastly, the Better Streets Commission met later that night. Uh, staff met with Better Streets Commission after the ad hoc meeting earlier in the day on April eleventh, the three local residents attending. The Better Streets Commission, including council person Megacheck's, uh, speaking as a resident, Mr. Megacheck submitted a detailed outline. Which we may discuss later tonight, of the overall approach and implementation of the various elements of the Kimley Moore Plan. The Better Streets Commission's comments are the following. Number one, staff should not include the baller adoption in the construction plan. Number two, bike lanes may not actually contribute to the safety issues that are intended to be addressed by the project. Three, speed tables will work, but note that they may cause a jarring effect on traffic traveling too fast. And fourth, staff should prioritize the local residents' feedback, including as much sidewalk the project can afford. As far as the analysis goes, um, tonight, four outreach events were successfully scheduled and held. Two local resident meetings, one ad hoc meeting and one Better Streets. Commission meeting. Each meeting discussed the various options incorporated in the Kimblehorn. Uh, engineering design. Additional requests were made by residents and supported by the Better Streets Commission, including sidewalks, speed tables, and a stop sign along the corridor. Staff realizes that not all elements. May be constructed within the budget limits approved by council, therefore, a phased approach would be the most logical strategy to implement any traffic safety measures approved by this project. All three groups supported the importance of the feedback from the residents. The elements supported by the residents are sidewalks, speed tables, and a flashing speed back speed sign. Staff has the ability to bid the project with the addition of alternative bid items, which could include the option of additional items from the Kimblehorn Plan, if budget allows. This project can also embrace a phased approach. And continue to add elements each year as we see the effectiveness or lack thereof of any of the initial phases that are directed. If directed by city council, this project can be added to the annual city pavement project this year to reduce costs. Fiscal impacts of the project. Are referenced with the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four city budget, which includes a sixty thousand dollar allocation for the construction of the project. The estimated cost of all the Timmy's one elements are typically cost approximately seventy thousand dollars if you add contingency. Which is above improved budget. The breakdown of the costs is attached to this report. The addition of the curb gutter and sidewalk costs are approximately two hundred fifty dollars per linear foot. Which would limit the amounts that we can can be constructed based on the priority of elements selected. Speed tables are approximately ten thousand dollars each, and the speed feedback sign may cost approximately fifteen thousand dollars with installation. If Dave's approach prioritizing the elements directed by city council may allow the construction costs to land within the existing budget allocation. The alternatives tonight that we brought to the council is choose a. Different priority developments for phase one to incorporate. And bid with the annual city pavement program, or two to choose not to move forward with the safety project at this time. I believe at the beginning, the recommendation from staff is to. Consider the recommendation of the Dave's Avenue residents and the Better Streets Commission to improve the S curve on Dave's Avenue with two speed tables. Sidewalk and a speech feedback sign. That's our recommendations, but as said previously, we could choose a different variety of those elements from council tonight, or choose not to move forward. With this project, and I'm here to answer your questions, Councilman.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh, in addition to the staff report, uh, council member Megachuck is part of the ad hoc committee, had a small presentation of his own that he would like to add. Thank you. You can put that up, please.
Yeah, I I put this as the objective. It's to increase the safety in the S curve. And that's important because if you've got a different objective, then. Then your, your, uh, recommendations are going to be different than that, but that's what I put up as to increase the safety in the S curve. Go to the next slide, please. And there's two people on the ad hoc committee, and council member Turner is also on that, and, um, I didn't review this with her, so this is my. Presentation is half of the ad hoc committee. Um, so I think we should do it in three phases. There's phase one, phase two, phase three, and then the complete streets, uh, portion of it. And in phase one, I recommend we start with the passive items, which is strapping with the bike lanes. Raised reflectors that are yellow and white slash red. And then a thirteen and a half mile an hour sign, and then put in these zebras. So that would be phase one, and I believe the cost would be according to the numbers presented by Kim Lee Horn would be fifty-five thousand dollars. Then in phase two, if phase one doesn't work and we go to phase two, then I would recommend we go with a a flashing speed sign. And if, and that's for another fifteen thousand, so that's where we get to the seventy thousand dollars. And then if that doesn't work, then go to Hardscape, which would include the speed tables for another thirty, and I believe. Um. Our city engineer had two at ten thousand each, and I went from an earlier version that had three at ten thousand each, so that's the difference in the, in the thirty thousand versus the twenty thousand. And then I think when we do a complete streets plan for. For, um, Dave's Avenue, that's when we do the half million dollars for the sidewalks, so it connects the sidewalks. So I wanted to put this recommendation up. Now I'll go through these points graphically with you with some photos. Go to the next slide, please. And to summarize, I think we should have a planned approach. Uh, start with the passive and then that are low cost, and what slows vehicles down. And then avoid unintended consequences, the flashing lights that will become annoying. I think that. For residents in the area, it may sound good now, but in the future, it'll become annoying. And then the noise from the speed tables. The, that may be fine, but. There will be noise from the speed tables. And I don't believe, and I should be speaking to council, not to, not to the group, but I want everyone to understand. That we shouldn't punish drivers that obey the speed limit. So if you're, if you're making each of them go over a speed table and they're going the speed limit, I think you're punishing them. Uh, and then, then finally, I think. Long term. The long term path has to be the sidewalks at some point, and I was very disappointed that when the White House was put on the corner. On the western part of the S curve, the site and our site and architectural commission didn't. Have a sidewalk put in there when the house was built, and and I regret that that now it's built. And and even though we own the first fifteen or twenty feet of land, it would be very disappointing to me as a homeowner that just bought the property. To have to put in a sidewalk, but that's the summary. Now I want to, I want to take counsel how I got there. Go to the next slide, please. This was, this photo was taken October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, and that was, I don't call it an accident. I call that a collision. That was the vehicle that went in at an excessive speed and and hit the mailbox. Go to the next slide, please. I don't really like to show these slides because to me they're pretty frightening and they're pretty scary and it's kind of dramatic. But this is what, what I saw when I was there, and it was right after school had gotten out. So there you see the crushed mailbox on the right, and it was a compressed natural gas vehicle. That's that black tank there. And then at the left hand side, you see. Kind of a little further away. Uh, next slide, please. This is a history of S curve collisions. And this is from an, an email that I received from one of the residents that happens to live there, that has refused himself, but he'll be coming back in to testify. But this, he, you can see in the second, in the first sub bullet, we have lost four mailboxes since two thousand and two. Okay, I personally, and I'll speak to the rest of council, I'd feel horrible if someone got injured, even if they were a driver, must, much less a pedestrian or a cyclist. When we know that this is a problem, so. So I would. This, this is very important to me that we do something, and I don't want to go through all these points here. Um, but let's go to the next slide. Oh, this also talks about, go, go back a little bit. It says, uh, last summer, a car going, uh. West missed the turn, scraped the curb in front on the, on this. West side, if you will, and then it collided with a, with a Tesla vehicle that was parked on the right hand side, and someone could have really gotten injured or killed in that. Collision. I'm not calling it an accident. I'm calling it a collision. Um. Go to the next slide, please. This is a photo that from February two thousand and four, and this is at the end of one of the driveways when there was a large, large bricks there. Um, go to the next slide and you'll see some more photos. So this, this is, I mean, to take out that big brick. Pillar, whatever, that's a lot of force, and the mailbox that you see to the left. Go to the next slide, please. Now, if we go back and we look at our safe pedestrian and bicycle routes. Or sorry, our general plan says that we have to consider safe pedestrian and bicycle routes. In our general plan for Monte Sereno, and I don't want to go through there, but also at the bottom, you see that we made a commitment to do a. Uh. A better, a, a bicycle and pedestrian master plan for Monte Sereno. Uh, go to the next slide, please. This is. Is, was in a report that was done, and I can't read what it says at the bottom there. Daryl, can you read what it says? The source, the highlighted, of sources bicycle pedestrian master plan twenty twenty-three. Right, this was. Was verbatim feedback that they, that our consultant K T U A got from. Uh, residents, and you see there's the references to the S curve and to Dave's app, the people going through the stop signs. So these are all, these are all things where we've been hearing this for years, we've been seeing it, and you know, the opportunity is here to do something. Go to the next slide, please. This is, is, there was a complete streets plan that was done, and we applied for a grant a few years ago. And this was what the plan was for the, for the S curve. Uh. I'm just putting it in here for completeness. Go to the next one. Slide, please. This is what Kim Lee Horn designed and our city engineer, uh, Daryl Jordan went through highlights of that a few minutes ago. Uh, go to the next slide, please.
Can I just ask a question these plasters? Sean, can you explain them? Because from here, I don't even know the difference between those two. Is it possible that you could explain that first?
I'll circle back and answer that.
Thank you.
Okay.
To me, it's just a picture.
Understood. Understood. Um, this, these are raised bi-directional road reflectors, so if you were going westbound in. You see, you've got the white line on the right, you've got the two yellows, and then if you use these bi-directional reflectors, people would see red. Uh, reflectors on the left hand side, and it'd be the opposite if you were going in the other direction. So these are very rare to see other than in a freeway on ramp, because if you're going the wrong direction on a freeway on ramp, that's not a good. Well, a good thing. So, but, but this is, this is one of the things that, that Naomi Willis from, uh, Kim Lee Horn. She said, there's no single item that's going to be your, your, for lack of a better term, your silver bullet. There's no single solution. It requires all these different layers. Of, of traffic calming, so different things appeal to different people as they're going through. Go to the next slide, please. These are optical speed bars, and the one at the top is what she recommended, and that's her design, so. So that there, you've got a bar that's eighteen inches, eight inches by eighteen inches, and that would be the roadway above a top view. And then I've got an example with photos, but the example, the bars go all the way across, but what happens here is. As you go into a situation being the S curve, these bars become closer together, so if you go the same speed, all of a sudden, it feels like you're going faster. I had no idea what she was talking about, but it made sense, and then I've got an example so that you'll understand what these are. This is one of the items that's on her plan. Okay, so this would be at the westbound portion and the eastbound portion before the S curve. Go to the next slide, please. So these. Are what. Upset a lot of people. She called them delineators and zebras. And this is in the striped area, so she was saying, let's alternate between what's called a zebra and a ballard. Or a delineator. And this is what a lot of people, all, I'm sure every person in this room does, does not want to see. Um, but. I would recommend we not do the ballers. I'm not recommending delineators. I'm recommending the zebras, so that we don't do any ballers, but we do zebras. Go to the next slide, please. This is an example of what the zebras are, and at the left hand side, if you're a driver going down the road and you move over to the right into the bike lane, you'll hit. A small part of the zebra, and it'll kind of shake you a little bit. It's not like you're going to hit a big, something big, but the further you go to the right, the taller it gets. So if you hit the first one, then you'll be your back. If you hit the first one and the second one, you know, like, how many do you have to hit? But if you, if you hit one of those full on, like, it'll. It will, uh, give you a sensation that you're going in the wrong direction. Uh, but on, if you're in the right hand side on the bike lane and you say, oh, I want to come out of the bike lane, the bicyclist is safer because. He or she is going with the flow of the, of the zebra. Okay, so it's kind of safer for cyclists. Go to the next slide, please. So this is a repeat of what I had before. So these are the phases. Do the striping. Do the raised reflectors, yellow and red, thirteen and a half mile an hour sign, and let me talk for a moment about thirteen and a half mile an hour sign. If you've already, uh, council's all gone down Keto Road, and you see the different wild per hour signs, those are yellow. They're not the white regulatory signs, and as Kim Lee Horn, they can't recommend thirteen and a half miles an hour. But our city manager, when he was with Naomi Willis and myself at the, at the S curve, he said, why don't we have thirteen and a half mile an hour signs? And I'm like, and because she was saying, should we have ten, should we have fifteen? And so you say, oh, maybe twelve and a half, but twelve and a half is logical, right? It's halfway between ten and fifteen, thirteen and a half miles an hour. It causes people that, where, how did they come up? What were they thinking? Oh, how fast am I going? You know, it kind of gives you that. That, you know, it, it makes you think. Go to the next slide, please. This is Kim Lee Horn's estimated cost, and I believe these, this is in the same report that, that the staff report, so these are all the numbers. And when you go through all the numbers, go to the next slide, please. And you add them up. You would get the striping, the raised reflectors, the thirteen and a half mile an hour sign, the zebras would be approximately fifty-five thousand. And then, you know, that doesn't work, the, the flashing speed sign for fifteen, then the speed tables for thirty, ultimately the sidewalks for half a million. Go to the next slide, please. This is an example of an S curve. And this is, uh, this is an overhead view. It's basically is from Google Earth. Um, but you can see the S curve. It's just, it's very similar to our S curve. Go to the next slide, please. I'm not sure if you can see it. But you see the lines that go completely across one lane. This is the, the southbound lane, if you will, and they're far apart and they get closer and closer. And then go to the next slide, please. This is the, the, the same view, but slightly different. Um. Oh, okay, so. So this is just so you understand what optical speed bars are, because I had never seen them before, and I had never, I, I never, um. I can't give you an example locally where they are, so this is innovative to some extent. Go to the next slide, please. This is what it looks like from the road perspective, but again, you see that line going all the way across. Kimberly Horn said eight inches wide. Or eight, eighteen inches by an eight inch line, but, but, but not going completely across the road. Go to the next slide, please. There's one just, you see that how close, how they get closer together, so as you slow down. They're coming at the same speed. To go to the next slide. And this is just the same thing on the northbound lane. It gives you an overview. Go to the next one. It's now I'm kind of repeating myself. And then that's what the driver sees, same sort of thing. Next slide. I think everyone can imagine what it is. And actually, on this one, there's a bus stop there, so it's, there's a bus stop before this S curve. Go to the next slide. This is the westbound sidewalk on Dave's Avenue. This is before you come up to Via Cavalero. Um, and you come up the hill and turn right, and I took this out of the Better Streets Plan. That was, that was published. That's the source of this, uh, photo, and this sidewalk is not connected to the other sidewalk that we're going to get to in the next slide, please. That's where the sidewalk ends around Equestrian Way. And you can see in the, in the distance, that's the S curve. And I think everyone knows what this looks like. Go to the next slide. So now I'm, uh, this is the same summary. Take a phased approach. Avoid unintended consequences. Don't punish the drivers. Obey the law. And have a long term path to sidewalk. So this is what I just wanted to go through and what. My side of the ad hoc committee recommends, and I would, um, it would be nice if, if council member Turner, Turner supported this as well, but we didn't have time to chat, chat about this before that.
All right. Well, thank you very much, council member Turner. Did you want to add anything to council member Megin check's report?
Well, um. I kind of want to, I kind of want to talk about it yet. I want to hear what, what residents want to say.
All right. Very good. So then at this point, I'd like to see if any members of council have questions for staff. Yes.
I was just wondering, what were the status of the grant? You mentioned there was a grant at one time, we serve grant, okay, until the Black Running Grants, um, there's no. You mentioned there was a grant at one time, we serve grants, okay, still apply grants. Uh, there's no, there's no grants attached to this project. There's some grants available, please. You may want to take a look at, there may still be something like that.
Um, I was gonna answer the question that was asked. If we put that slide back up and, and perhaps Mr. Thornton can also talk about the features of the Kim Lee Horn that you could either put the one up that I had or the other one. That answers, to answer the, the question. There it is. So, um, I'll, I'll give, I'll give my sort of view, the high level. If you started at Via Cavalero on the left-hand side or, or Via Vicaro, um, the, the optical bars would be in that first area. And then the bike lane would be on the inside of that. And in the middle of that first curve, there would be some striping and that's to allow to push the eastbound lane out. So it's not highly, a highly banked curve. And it's to give cyclists and pedestrians somewhere to walk that's much safer on the, on that first curve. But if you've got emergency vehicles, and she went through the calculations, what's the radius of the curve, et cetera, for a truck? So that they don't have, they don't conflict when they're making, when they're making that left-hand turn uh, towards Via Cavalero. Um, and then the, she had bollards in there with the zebras, and I'm not recommending any bollards. So that they, we don't have conflicts with, and that's the center part and in, in the middle of the curve. Um, and so that we don't have conflicts with, with trash collection, with UPS drivers and gardeners, that sort of thing. Um, and just scroll down a little bit, please. And then you can see the, the optical bars. Maybe you can't see it, but I, anyways, they're at the lower right-hand corner where you're coming into the curve. But you would have a bike lane on the right-hand side and also on the left-hand side. And she, she doesn't have the detail on the, on the reflectors. They would, the, the optical bars would start, I think, where number nine is or so. Oh, then start back there. And Daryl, do you wanna explain any of the other features or?
All right. I think you've done a good job of what Kim Lee Horn has provided us. I guess maybe if there's any questions from the audience when they come up, we can just address them.
So, so we're, we're not taking any questions from the public right now, but we will have a public input section. At which point you can ask your questions. We will then collect all of the questions during public comment. And we'll respond to them if we're able to, uh, after the public comment session has been closed. Okay. So any more questions for staff? Okay. At this point, I would like to open it up for public comment and starting the public comment will be our mayor. So let me, let him into the room.
I actually heard most of that. So, thank you. Uh, this is Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm addressing you today as a resident. I want that to be absolutely clear, not as the mayor. Um, as I said earlier, this is the fifth meeting on the subject this year. And uh, the neighbor, the neighborhood meetings were very well attended. The input was very clear. Uh, the neighbors want speed tables, sidewalk, or at least a partial sidewalk. This was unanimous among all the neighbors. Uh, the city council was presented with the results of the neighborhood meetings and referred the matter to, the matter to the Better Streets Commission. The Better Streets Commission heard all the arguments and that has led to the uh, recommendation made by staff just now. The neighbors also, as was mentioned, I could hear it over uh, through Zoom unanimously and strongly objected to bollards. Just, not just because they're ugly, uh, but they would deface the street. Would a very nice looking street look pretty bad. Since bollards seem to be off the table, I'll skip that part of my arguments here. Creating a sidewalk would make the S curve much safer for pedestrians. Pedestrians, by the way, includes young children and their parents walking towards the Dave's Elementary School. I think we have to take that into account with the timing. To me, that seems like one of the more urgent things, the sidewalk. Uh, speed tables will significantly slow down traffic, as can be observed, for example, on Pierce Road in Saratoga. It's a street that's very similar to Dave's Avenue. Now on this street, as uh, council member Mecklench just mentioned, I could hear it through Zoom. There have been numerous accidents and incidents on this stretch. Cars have slammed into parked, parked vehicles. Cars have ended up in neighborhoods' front yards. Many mailboxes and, and other property has been damaged and destroyed. Significant speeding and screeching tires are a frequent occurrence. Pedestrians are at risk each and every day. And that's why I think sidewalks are so critical. Luckily, no serious injuries or deaths have occurred so far. So this is the fifth meeting on the subject. So I, I would like to quote a very famous local politician who wrote to the council this morning, if we do nothing, nothing gets done. So, thank you.
Okay. Hold on one sec. So as you heard, um, council member Mecklench, through the ad hoc committee came out with a report that varies significantly from what we have as a recommendation in the agenda. Have you looked at that report and do you agree with any parts of it or all of it?
I agree, but the thing that worries me most is the timing. Like I said, of the sidewalk. If we push out the sidewalk to stage number four, if you will, that could take a few more years and pedestrians are at risk every day.
Well, I, I think, I think his report was a complete set of sidewalks, not the partial set of sidewalks that we're talking about as part of the recommendations.
Yeah.
The article cited all the, could have been all the similarities, you know. Correct?
Partial sidewalk, Mecklench had clarified.
So we, we currently have sidewalks as part of the recommendation. You're talking about using the same sidewalks as part of your recommendation, correct? Right. I would say that we could put in one sidewalk on the inside curb, whichever one is determined. If Kim Lee Horn was given the alternative, do you wanna have the westbound one by the White House or would you prefer to have the or sorry, eastbound by the White, or the westernmost or the easternmost inside, whatever? So that, you know, they're two hundred and fifty dollars a, a linear foot. I believe that was the estimate. You know, so if you need fifty feet, then that's seventy-five thousand dollars. Right. So I mean, there won't be a whole lot of sidewalks going in with a, with a fifty, sixty thousand dollar budget. So, um, okay. So one last question. Uh, part of the recommendation is for speed tables. And during the meetings that, that you attended, you said there was a hundred percent support for those, correct?
Correct.
Did anybody speak against them? And, and I'm, I'm just gonna bring it up as also kind of at the prelude to, um, to public comment because I've been on council for a long time and I've been involved in, in suggestions of how to calm traffic. It's been one of my big topics for a long time. And one thing that I have seen time and time again is that the residents call for speed bumps and speed tables only to have even a larger call to get them taken out within a couple of years. And it costs just as much to take them out for the most part as to put them in. Well, I, I don't know. I think the ones we're talking about though are removable, correct? So it may not be that bad. But as long as everybody happy with that, I'm willing to go because it's their street. But I just wanted to see if, if anybody spoke against any of, any chance of having.
Probably everybody here should have a chance to speak, but personally, I think, uh, to me, it's, it's a trade-off. It's a trade-off between lowering the risk and the danger and possibly some additional noise from vehicles going over these speed tables. For me, that would be a very clear choice. I think uh, speed tables would slow down cars significantly, as you can see on Pierce Road in Saratoga. So I, I would personally pick that over having those speed tables.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much for speaking.
I will accuse myself again.
Re-accuse yourself. Okay. Uh, before we get started with the rest of public comment, um, Daryl, are you gonna volunteer to take that question?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. So I'm gonna put my pen down and ask for the first volunteer to come up and speak. Who would like to come up and speak first? Come on up.
Can he stand? Or are you doing it from his seat?
No, we need you to actually, well, uh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
We need a portable mic, meeting manager. Yeah. First question, can we get a portable microphone? I'm so sorry, sir.
Now, if you live at uh, eighteen, one eight one six one Dave's Avenue is right on the corner there. My first question is, how wide is Dave's Avenue? I see all these things going up there, a bike lane, which isn't there now. And there's uh, then you get a sidewalk, probably won't come all the way up to mine. Uh, but when I start looking at all that you have, it'd be like further down Dave's Avenue by the school there and stuff. It's all laid out. Cars parked there all the time, which is legal. I have to go over the double line to get around them. Now that's not very good design as far as I'm concerned. And I just don't want the same thing to happen. Look at all the lanes you've got, all spread up. How far, how wide is the lane to drive uh, your car? You can also look at Winchester Boulevard, uh, where they put in all that stuff. Now people come and uh, visit me from out of town and stuff. They say, what is this? If you go down and say, uh, you know, first off, they have a bike lane, then they probably have parked cars. And then they have a, a driving lane, a center lane and another driving lane. In the driving lane, you almost have to hit the bumps, the little thing, the markers in the middle in order to drive down it without hitting the parked cars. I mean, you know, I think we have to use a little bit of brain work. And so my first question is, how wide is that street? Can we fit all that stuff in and still stay in our lanes? I don't think you can.
Okay. So as I mentioned, we're going to collect all the questions and we'll do a mass answering session afterward. Um, just wanted to make sure I, I understood though. Are you for the basic proposal that's in the agenda though?
I would like, yeah, the speed bumps or whatever you wanna uh, call them. I think that's good. The sidewalk is.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming in tonight. And who's next? Come on up.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council Members and Staff. I'm Nicola Wolshammer and I've lived on S curve of Dave's Avenue since two thousand and two. There have been too many traffic accidents due to speeding cars that caused property damage and there have been close calls. And it's only a matter of time before a person gets seriously hurt or killed. Many people go for a run or walk along Dave's Avenue and I do too. Along the S curve, I'm always on edge. So I'm glad the city council is addressing this problem. On most of the straight part of Dave's Avenue, there are stop signs and a cycle. They slow cars down. Good. Many people ride their bike on Dave's, mostly not in the bike lane for what I see daily. On the S curve, I know of only one guy since two thousand and two who did ride his bike in the bike lane going east, going west. Due to the sharp turn, speed, probably some gravel and debris, he ended up with a good amount of road rash. And I'm sure he's riding his bike towards the middle of the road around the turns now, like everybody else. I'm all for designated bike lanes, but why have a bike lane if it's only used by pedestrians who are on edge and speeding cars that swerve into the turns? A sidewalk makes more sense. As far as I know, kids are allowed to ride their bikes on the sidewalk and until they can handle the perils of traffic, I think they should. Bollards and the zebra things have been brought up by the designer. Uh, I don't know what the guidelines for the designer were, but not just the bollards, but now that I see what the zebras are, I think they're also a problem possibly. Um, anyone visiting or with a job to do at the houses there would have to park quite a distance away because those zebras are a bump that you cannot, are not supposed to go over. There will not be enough room for the street sweep. Mail carrier and delivery services will still have to stop in the middle of the road to make their deliveries. Damage ball, damage, the, the bollards don't have to be replaced because they won't be there apparently. These and other concerns can be addressed by leaving out the bollards and the zebras, but um, you'd have to take out all of, out of all of them. So I consider putting it in, in the first place. Striping as much, you know, as possible. There has been striping in the turn uh, right in front of our house uh, that was put in a couple of years ago. It's pretty much gone by now. There were little raised reflectors. They're pretty much all gone by now. Uh, so I don't know how useful that will be in the long term. The keep our city pretty signs are not just for trash on the road. So I hope it's going to be something that looks good. Sidewalks make a road narrower. That will slow cars down, safer for everyone.
Okay. We're gonna need to have you wrap it up. I'm sorry.
Speed tables are not the same as speed bumps. They make the road safer too. And I don't care if somebody speeds. They need to be punished. And on a speed table, you can go twenty-five miles an hour and it, there's no punishment there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Okay. So, um, thank you. So I understand having remote viewers who would like to speak, Steve White. Steve Jackson? No, no. Steve, Steve White is appearing. Is it?
No, it's Steve Jackson.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Hello, Mr. Jackson. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Steve Jackson, a retired anesthesiologist and critical care physician. And I've been a proud resident of Monteserino for forty-eight years. As an acute care physician, over the years, I've witnessed and cared for patients, both pedestrians and cyclists in the emergency room, operating room and intensive care units, all of whom were seriously injured or ultimately died from accidents that occurred on the streets of their towns. Even to this day, I still come upon the tragedy of morbidly and mortally wounded patients in the intensive care units when I conduct medical ethics consultations. I am a strong believer in the value of exercise for achieving and maintaining the health of our citizens. Not just physical health, but also mental and psychological health. This exercise can take the form of walking, even walking one's dog, jogging, running and biking. Adults and children alike. In our city, all residents should be able to exercise and feel that they are doing so in a safe environment. But besides feeling safe, they actually should be safe. I sent a long letter to the city council in last May requesting that a concerted effort be made to make Monteserino safer for pedestrians and bikers, adults and children, and especially children going to and from school. That letter addressed the issue of installing sidewalks in several locations. One of those locations what is, uh, what I consider to be a notorious street safety issue, the so-called S curve area of Dave's Avenue, where there have been numerous automobile accidents and what I would classify as near misses. Many related to excessive motor vehicle speeds. This curved strip of road needs to have safe sidewalks and safe bicycle lanes. The recent construction of a new house on property occupying a major section of one end of the S curve should have had mandated the appropriate sidewalk and street improvements at that time. I believe that Monteserino should develop a plan for a citizen-safe S curve, including sidewalks for pedestrians and runners and bike lanes. I think we should begin with relatively simple and low-cost solutions that would not impose undue burdens on our citizens. However, if they're for a reasonable length of time, these plans do not safely uh, suffice safety-wise, then more elaborate safety. Then more elaborate safety projects should be pursued. In summary, our Better Streets Commission needs to advocate and champion reasonable, practical, and timely solutions for creating safe pedestrian and bicycle routes for all of the residents and visitors within our city boundaries, enabling safe connections between all segments of our city. The safety of our citizens should be paramount, and this demands prompt and effective action. I thank you for being able to address you.
Okay, thank you so much for speaking. I just wanted to ask you a quick question. Did you feel that the recommendations made in the agenda would work to satisfy some of your concerns? If not all?
Yes, I believe that the recommendations are all worthy of consideration and some more than others, some more or less expensive than others. But I think we need prompt action and no more hesitation and delays.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have another council member who would like to ask a quick question.
Sure.
Hi, Steve. The ad hoc committee being me did a presentation, I'm not sure if you were able to see it. But in the recommendation, it was to take a phased approach that included the reflectors, the optical bars, the zebras. And then the next phase for about fifty-five thousand, and the next phase was the, was the LED sign for fifteen thousand, and then the one after that was putting in the, the speed tables. Do you agree with that, or do you not?
Yes, I, I heard the recommendations that you made. I think they were intelligent approaches. I think that it's important to consider a phased approach as long as it's reasonable and as long as safety is the primary concern. So I, I believe that many elements of your proposal are worthy of consideration, and I would approve of them. I think we just need to start doing something rather than sitting and talking about it before some tragedy happens.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'm sorry, the gentleman in the back's right shirt, you hold your hand up. Come on up.
Come on up. Jim Metapesser, I live in the middle of the S curve and have seen it since nineteen ninety-six.
Okay.
Putting people under the influence on the north side that drove across the lawn next to me, never made the turn. Luckily, just touched my garage, almost went into the children's bedroom. So with that said, somebody mentioned punishment from noise, from speed bumps, whatever we wanna call them, the tables. I think the punishment is if somebody gets in an accident. And most of the people going around those turns fast are under the influence, probably, or distracted. They're not regular people that are driving, like you say, gonna be punished because they drive the speed limit. I think the sound from all those screeching tires is far worse than any noise coming from a speed table. Accidents are beyond far worse. The potential accidents that have happened, we've been lucky. I've seen people die on that other side by the White House, everybody talks about the White House, that corner right there. The cars cut that corner pretty close. That would be the first priority for a short sidewalk at least. But I really think those speed tables do it. Nobody pays attention to the signs that are hitting the mailboxes, driving across lawns, hitting my garage. They're not looking at the speed signs. They're distracted. They're smoking pot, they're drinking. I wish we had reports from, I know the person that hit my garage, he went to jail. He was from a party, stole a Mercedes. He said, police said you're the proud owner with slightly damaged Mercedes now. Wasn't that funny, especially when twenty of them are out there with lights trying to find him? Because he took the car from a party. But I don't think the speed signs do anything, and the speed bumps aren't gonna stop the people that are impaired. I think we need those speed tables to slow them down before they even get to that speed, before they get to that turn.
Very good. Thank you. Can I ask one?
Yes.
You attended some of the residents' meetings?
Yes, I did.
Were there any discussion about guardrails? Because I hear a lot of stories about how people have left the road. And they're usually leaving it because of excessive speed. But a lot of it sounds like it's also from drunken driving, falling asleep, not paying attention, not even knowing the road. I- in terms of its makeup. Was there any discussion about guardrails, or what did the residents think about those?
I don't recall any discussion about guardrails, and I don't know where you could put them.
Okay.
Where would you put those?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Impacting your place, and I've seen people going past Tom's house on the north side again. And they hit Oleanders, the white fence, took a look at the white fence, Kathy knows which house that was. That was just a young kid distracted with his girlfriend, probably on his phone texting, who knows? Didn't make the turn.
Yeah.
Luckily, nobody was walking right there.
All right.
There was a few speed tables on the road that would have driven them away, made them away.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much for coming in tonight. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, there was somebody over here on the right, yes, that was you.
Hi, I live on Via Palomino, and I'm on Dave's Avenue a lot. And I guess one of my, my, one question is really, because it seems like we're trying to solve a problem, do it economically, and then do it in phases because sidewalks are too expensive right now. So I'm just curious why we haven't just talked about a stop sign as like a first phase, at least, in slowing that traffic down.
Okay, thank you so much, but, but.
Oh, Leslie would be accounting them.
And, but other than the stop sign, do you think that the recommendations made on the agenda would help with some of the problems of the S curve?
I, I think they would. I, I think, to me, it just seems like a lot happening in a small space. And again, it seems like we're trying to do a lot, but do it with expenses in mind. And it, and it seems like the, most people are really in support of, and I am as well, sidewalks. And so we're spending money on a lot of different stuff, you know, zebras and striping, and, and I'm not, and I'm sure they work. But I also think there's like a simple solution that you could try at the first phase and see if that. And I just, and, and somebody may have asked that question, and it may have been answered, and I don't know what that is.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, there was a woman in the back, come on up.
My neighbors, hi council, my name is Sasha Spitzer, I'm at one eight one seven two Dave's Avenue. Happen to be Avery's neighbor. We have been victims of mailbox taking out of, we've been victims of cows plowing and plowing into our, in between, property, of all kinds of things. It's been both drunken drivers, and it's been, I would say, the most disturbing one was about two forty-five when all the Fisher kids are coming back on their bikes, or, or Dave's Avenue kids, right? You are coming back home via those bike lanes. And Avery's mailbox was taken out, it's very close to our mailbox. And my son was tasked, one of his little chores is to sometimes go and get the mail by himself. And that should be a very, very safe chore, I think, for a child of eight, nine years old, to go down and go get your mail. It's no longer allowed to do that. Forget walking home from school or to school. We are five minutes away. I should not be contributing to the traffic problem as I'm driving my eldest, who happens to have epilepsy, she's not able to drive herself, she's in high school, I have to drive her. But I'm part of the traffic problem. I should not have to negate that route, and he is fully able to walk himself. He has friends who would be happy to walk with him, being dropped off at our house, because we're just a straight shot from school. The number one reason why the parents are against that is because there is no sidewalk and no barrier protecting the children from impact of the traffic zooming along, along that turn. Too unpro, right? Because again, we have that problem of parents getting to different schools from different areas. Now, the barrier cannot be rails, because where would I put our trash? Where I already have trouble, we, we are trash cans are constantly getting mowed over. As it is, we've actually had to collude with our neighbors to create a barrier, if you will, of trash cans such that they stay intact. Right now, my trash can doesn't have a lid on it. It's, it's a constant problem, problem. I've seen people take out other neighbors' trash cans. Our mailbox, we're not going to get a nice one, I understand why now. That's, it, it's a case of it is what it is. However, that is all material stuff, the children, the walkers. You know, it's, it's something that I would love to see in the community. Now, we have two more years at Dave's, but the, our neighbors, their son's about to go to Dave's. And I would love for him to have a safe walking opportunity. And I know our neighbor is not able to attend the meeting again, because his son's still very young, probably doing bedtime right now. But if we, if we came together as a community and really did save routes to school, I think that safer route would be not, not something that will just bump a car. But really, that, where the, where the driver is consciously aware of the fact that his car is going to get damaged if he goes whoosh against that sidewalk.
Can I get you to rock it up, please?
Yes, that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight. Council member?
Yes.
Make a check, has a question for you.
Were you there on April the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, when that truck was on its side?
Yes, and that was actually a very traumatic experience all around, because that was daytime. That was.
Did you and I speak, were we in your driveway?
I think, I think we did, and, and my HVAC guy was there, and he thought that my son was trapped between the truck and the mailbox when he went to get the mail, because we have a very close relationship, and Fidel was shaken up, I was shaken up, there was a lot of yelling between two of us. We couldn't turn off the truck, we couldn't get the driver out of the truck. And it actually took a good twenty-five minutes for any emergency services to come over. And that's, that was pure daylight. And while I think eventually it was determined that the driver was somewhat intoxicated, I think there was contention as much. And these are just things that happen, right?
I, I thought I recognized you, because you and I had that conversation in your driveway, I believe.
Yes.
When we were watching all this, thank you.
Hey, thank you so much. There was a, one woman who raised her hand before you did? You know, one of, okay, ma'am, come on up.
Thank you. My name is Patty Charles, and I live on Twin Creeks. I'm part of the Sacred St. School Organization. And I run cycling classes where I take fifth grade kids out on the roads of Los Gadas in Montessorino. And I teach them how to get through intersections, and we do, I love Winchester now, my favorite road to ride on with little kids. But one of the things that is very difficult, because I love to take them from Dave's and through the S curve and over to SoV, and we cruise around in that area and come back. And it's, the roads are wide, and they're beautiful, and they smell good, it's fantastic. But the S curve is always a problem, and I cycle myself as well. And I, when I get to the, coming from Dave's on the right-hand side of the road and the white fence with all the bushes that need to be constantly trimmed, because there's lots of debris in the road, it moves us all into the road. And then we make that first turn, and you just don't know what's gonna come the other way, because it's kind of a blind curve, especially when you've got six little kids behind you. You know, trusting you to get them through the curve, or worse yet, if one of them's leading, it's even worse. But I do think we need, I think the cycling lanes are super important in that, in that area, because it is cycling through Dave's down to Twin Creeks and down to Kido and SoV, and it's a very common way that people go. I have mixed feelings about the zebras, because I think with all the debris, you do sometimes have to move into the road. I don't think little kids could navigate the zebras very well. But I think sidewalks would be wonderful, and I think Brian's recommendations of the reflectors are good, because they get night, the visibility of the curve is terrible. And I think making the lanes smaller, as we've seen on Winchester, as was mentioned, because people have to slow down to stay in the lanes, can be very calming for traffic. And I think if people see the lines and they're bright, and there's a, you know, a bike lane that's visible and protected would be great, but has to be visible, I think it would make a huge difference into the traffic there. But I agree that something needs to happen very quickly, and I see kids down in Twin Creeks, there's lots of kids that come up and go that direction to school. And it's, it's a scary endeavor for them. Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Just before you leave, the recommendations that are in the, in the agenda, do you think that they would be helpful?
I think they would be great. If I could change, I would say, I didn't, there was not a stop sign on there, which I think is good, because Twin Creeks is the land of the unnecessary stop sign, and once they're in, you can't take them out because of legal reasons. So I think if a stop sign is considered, it needs to be, considering there's no other traffic coming through there, it would slow people down, but I think it's difficult to get stop signs out once you put them in.
Okay.
I think the speed tables are a great idea, and I think that the recommendations of the, the striping, I think is super important, especially to make it more visible and to tighten those lanes to slow the cars down. So yes, I do think they're very good recommendations. The only thing I would put a question mark next to is the, the zebras, because I do think with the, I think they're oleander bushes that are constantly needing to be trimmed and maybe aren't trimmed, it always moves the bikes into the, into the middle lane.
Right.
So either those bushes need to stay really trimmed, so that people aren't having to go over the zebras, or, yeah.
And, and were there any facets of the ad hoc committee's report?
Well, that's the one I was addressing, I think that's what I thought.
I was talking about the one that was in the agenda, which is the, the sidewalks, the speed tables, the the, again, because of the sign, the one, the filing, the Jackson.
I think, I think all of those are great recommendations.
Okay.
And I think if your money is an issue, I mean, I, like everybody, I think sidewalks would be probably, the, good striping on the roads and sidewalks would probably solve a lot of problems. And I do think there's space, especially if there's fifteen feet of land in front of the White House. There's definitely space for a sidewalk, bike lanes, and two lanes of traffic, I would say.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hi there, my name is Kathy Call. I live at one eight one oh one Dave's Avenue. My parents bought that home in nineteen sixty-nine. I am the gray house that is across all of those scenes that you show with the mailbox out. We love where we live. Uh, let's just get it out there, speed humps, both sides, Dave's Avenue, other side of Dave's Avenue, one in the middle, sidewalks. We love where we live, we keep our bushes trimmed. I've never had a problem backing out of my driveway in fifty years, my parents owned it when I lived there. The cyclists aren't a problem, the walkers aren't a problem. We are very respectful. We wanna maintain the beauty and the rural of Dave's Avenue, because that's why we bought there. We now get to live in my parents' home. We don't want a whole bunch of obstru- obtrusive stuff in our neighborhood. I've gone down Kido Road, thirteen and a half miles an hour, got me for a nanosecond. I went down Kido every day to take my daughter to Midi, never meant another thing to me. Black ran, didn't mean a thing, watched the cyclists, watched the white bikers. Never looked at the signs, signs don't mean a thing anymore, catches you one time. Speed humps, sidewalks, speed humps. The rest of it, the zebra things, the cyclists are gonna go around them, get out in the street. They're not gonna wanna go over this. They're gonna go out in the street, they're gonna go out in the street. I'm going out in the street or on the cyclist, that's where they wanna ride. So, let's just keep it simple, keep it cost-effective. Put the speed tables in on both sides of the S curve, and I live very happy there for the rest of my life on the S curve in that gray house.
Okay, thank you so much. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, come on up, sir.
Hi, my name is Eric Slivo, one eight two three zero, Dave's Avenue, I'm about half a block from the S turn. Been there for over twenty-five years, and walked that S turn several times a week. I've never seen a cyclist go on the side of the road, they always ride right in the middle, because it's safest place to ride. And ballards and zebras, I'm totally against. I'd love to see some sidewalks and maybe speed tables that may slow them down. But if we're dealing with drunker drivers, they don't look at any of those, and know that will stop them. But at least maybe it will slow them down, reflectors maybe, but ballards and zebras, I don't think it's gonna work.
Great, thank you. Okay, do you have any members remote that would like to first? Okay, all right, so we're back to the in-house audience. Great, come on up.
All right.
I just wanna make sure that people online didn't know we were forgetting.
Okay, that's fair. Uh, my name's Bart Call, and my wife just spoke, I live on Dave's Avenue as well. I was at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago. Liz Lawler was here, spoke very eloquently about the entire situation, made it very simple. If you're gonna phase in work and spend money on things, I think the right thing to do. Made it very simple. If you're going to phase in work and spend money on things, I think the right thing to do is. Sidewalks first and foremost. Don't put that fourth. Put it first. Second, you want to slow traffic, speed tables. Everybody's talking about it. Everybody thinks that works. It works in neighborhoods left and right. I'm a real estate agent. I see it all the time. Pierce, Pierce Road, it works. Uh, Vineland, uh, we've got them in. Over by Chameleon Terrace. There's a number of them, and it works. Definitely works. So I think keeping it simple and phasing it in smart. Let's be smart about it. On top of that, being a property owner, I do want to keep my property beautiful. I think keeping uh the rural look and if you're going to start adding numerous items. With and this, the zebras, especially for bicyclists, I don't think that's safe at all. Most bicyclists been there for twenty years, all of them go down the middle of the road. If they have to swerve over to the bike lane, they're going to hit one of those zebra. Things sideways and crash. No doubt in my mind. Ninety percent use the middle of the road, so. What else?
Okay, so overall, you like the recommendations that are in the agenda?
So when you're saying that, when, do you mean the recommendations? Explain that because it seems like what are the recommendations? First and foremost.
Daryl, can you go through the recommendations again real fast?
Right. The initial recommendation is. To install two speed tables, one at the top and one at the bottom, as much sidewalk as we can, and a speed feedback sign.
Yes, absolutely. One hundred percent. That that I think most of us, especially neighbors recommend.
And some of the things that you heard from the ad hoc committee, you didn't like the zebra, you didn't like the extra striping?
No, no.
Uh, because you you wanted to keep the world.
Love to keep the rural look. I think most all of us do, and we'd like to keep it beautiful. If those don't work. If Liz Lawler put it perfectly, try those. If they don't work, then we'll look at other things to to do. And I think that would be the second or third case.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much for coming up.
Yeah, I've got a question. And. I'm on Strava, which records my bicycle rides. In the past ninety days, I've gone through the S curve. Approximately forty seven times. Okay, so once every couple of days. I'm the old guy in neon spandex with a neon helmet that rides down Dave's Out. I'm the local legend there, according to Strava. I have never, and I will say it again, I have never, never say never, but I have never not ridden in the bike lane. My objective is to get exercise, so I'm not trying to take the curve tight. And I'm surprised that you haven't seen me going through there in the past ninety days. And I've 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 gone through there for the past year when I started riding my bike. Along Dave's app, out to Highway Nine, then up through El Surino and back down on Winchester.
I I didn't say I didn't see you. One, I do see you. Two, I'm seeing the majority of bike riders ride in the middle of the road. When they're coming down around the S curve, it's safer for them to go around the middle of the road, especially when there's no cars. And they all do it. When a car comes, then they move over to the bike lane. And that's the way it is. I've been there for twenty five years. I see it daily.
Okay, so my my next question for you.
Yeah.
Is the zebras, you said that that those won't work because they impede the bike lane. But you've got on the on the diagram, there's the bike lane, then you've got a buffer lane, buffer area, and the zebras are inside of that. They're not in the bike lane. There's no dirt to accumulate in the bike lane with the zebras.
What what I was trying to say is, the bikers that ride down the middle of the road. If they need to get over because of cars coming, they may hit those bumps getting back into the bike lane. You're saying it's safe when they're coming out of the bike lane?
Yes.
Understood, because it's going in that direction. When they're going back into the bike lane, what happens? They have to avoid those zebras, those bumps which are angled out. It could cause an accident for a biker. Easy.
Right. As a cyclist, I have, I, in the state of California, I'm allowed to to take the full lane now. So I don't have to.
Let's let's have, excuse me, let's have quiet. We have our council member speaking with a member of the public, so let them do their question and answer. We've let everybody else.
Do it. And and. I am asking you these questions because I'm concerned about safety. I was terrified when I saw what happened there. And it was probably two weeks after Aver and I actually measured, and then there happened to be a collision. After we were doing the measuring in the middle of the road there. So, so I want what's going to work. But I but I but I do think that that the cyclists that I know of that cycle through there. They will some, they may take the the center of the road if they're on a road bike. Because they're going through pretty quick. But the other folks are are that want to get exercise. They're not trying to cut the corner.
The ones biking usually come around those corners with speed. They cannot stay in the bike lane around that S curve. Cannot. And I'm telling you, if you're out of the bike lane, getting back into it, how do you avoid the bumps? As a biker, how would you avoid them?
I'd stay in the lane.
You'd stay in the in the traffic lane, not in the bike lane.
Well, first of all, I would always be in the bike lane. But if I wasn't in the bike lane, I wouldn't try to get into the bike lane. Why? All you have to do is sort of. Let's, okay.
Anything else?
No, thank you so much. Okay. Uh, do we have any other members? I I saw a hand up. Come on up, man.
Um, hi, my name is Paula Englegau. I live on Bantito. I've been a resident of Montestorino for twenty five years. I'm quite familiar with the S curve from driving it and walking it. And yes, I do know several people who live in that spot too. Um, but this problem's been going on since I moved here. Over twenty years ago, Kathy's mom, Trudy Lucia, had me sign a petition, which she presented to the city. And at that time, the residents had plans to um improve that section. And nothing was done. And then it was only just within the last several years that the striking was done. So ultimately, I think. When you guys make your decision, please listen to the residents who live on Dave's. Or just on the peripheral streets. They're the ones who live there. They're the ones who know what is going on. And what they've had to deal with through the years. And their recommendations, I think, are the ultimate ones to do and to start with. And I believe that was the sidewalks and the speed bumps. The other things, maybe in the future, but at least start with those because I think that would be the safest for cars. Walkers, bicyclists, everybody. Start with the basics. That the residents have planned and provided for you. And also, I want to say thank you all of you and to everyone here who's gone to all the meetings to try to come up with a plan to make it the best for everyone.
Okay, thank you so much.
It's a question. When you say sidewalks, how far do you want the sidewalks to go? All the way from Dave's up to the S curve or?
So so the sidewalks on Dave's, and I don't know if this is part of the Better Straits Plan. I'm not as well versed in that. And I and I did read the the documents you guys had put online for the meeting. I, there was already sidewalks that were added from the school and up. I thought the plan was to eventually put sidewalks all the entire length of days out to nine. To make it safer for the students and the walkers, because the kids will just ride on sidewalks.
Yeah, that I believe may be the plan. But right now, it's considered the S go. So how much of the S go do you want sidewalk?
Um, the the entire length of the S curve that that you're showing, I think it should have a sidewalk, put it on one side. And then put it on the other. As far as the budget, this has been going on, like I said, for for over twenty five years that I've lived here. And I and I'm a lifelong resident of the valley, so I know how long it takes to get stuff done. So.
But we're we're getting it. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak? Sure, come on up, sir.
Hi, so I'm Alan Bernstein. I'm on Via Carol, direct here on Dave's, but insider. And I've been here for about fourteen years. Great network, love it. And uh, I haven't been deeply involved in the discussion so far. So all the context I have is my personal experience and what I've uh been this meeting. Uh, and so my, I I see a lot of trade-offs that have to be balanced. That the look in the street, the safety of the people, the budgeting and so on. It's hard to juggle all those balls. Have everything perfect. But what I'm sensing is, and where we're at, it is. Uh, like Hattie said, keep it simple, keep the speed tables, keep the sidewalks, and that seems to me the the right balance. So just posting my support of that.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, man, come on up.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Lisa Sliva. Uh, my husband spoke briefly. Uh, we live at one eight two three zero Dave's Avenue. We are right at the stop sign at Via Caballeros in Dave's. We've been there about twenty five years. And uh, I think the main objective here is slowing people down. And just being able to slow traffic down, I think, is really our primary objective. Even if you're talking drunk drivers, which is really the primary accidents that happen in that S turn, S curve. Are from people that are inebriated. So if you take that piece out and and you're talking about safety, it's slowing traffic down. So I think your objectives of putting in the speed bumps and putting in the sidewalk are really your best course of action. For keeping kids safe, cyclists safe. You have sidewalks on one side, you have a bike lane on the other side. Because you really don't have much road left. And truth is, residents need a place to park too. We have guests come over, we want to entertain. Where do we have our friends park? The only place left for them to park is in the street. And we don't have a lot of real estate left. So if we can just slow people down. Put in those uh those speed bumps, that's really the primary objective. And I think that's going to create a a much better, a safer situation uh for that S turn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, we're coming up on the last call here.
Yes, one more question.
Sure.
I I if if we do the sidewalks first, what does the timeline look like?
Can you add that to the list, please?
Because I I think that was a great idea, but if we only have sixty thousand dollars, how much sidewalk does that get us?
Okay, uh, I think I'm going to close the public session now. Do we have a speaker online?
That was not shared to you guys. We just got it a little bit right after the meeting started, so I don't know if you'd like me to.
Sure, can you read it, please?
Just to save her voice.
Okay.
I can see it. Good evening. I hope this message finds you well, and I apologize that I can't be in person tonight. I am ready to extend my full support of extending the sidewalk along the Dave's Avenue S curve so all students can safely walk to school. While I'm sure the fiscal implications are steep, I know that the safety of our youth is a non-negotiable. On behalf of the Dave's Avenue staff, we work so hard to keep students. So so hard to help students learn how to be safe at school and within the community. In year twenty twenty four, it's hard to believe that we are advocating for a sidewalk. When we know better, we do better. Please know that the entire Dave's Avenue staff supports this project. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, Principal Jenna Jenna Middleman.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. So we've heard a lot of discussion tonight, and maybe if we can focus on the proposal that's in the agenda. Which basically says that what what the questions. Okay, so um. Few things to focus on is that the agenda talks about. The recommendation being speed tables, the extending the sidewalk with whatever money we have available. And flashing speed signs and um. I said speed tables, right? And and uh, that's it. Those those were the three things that people were a hundred percent in support of. We then heard from the ad hoc committee who had some additional suggestions. A lot of those did not seem to be as well. Accepted, I'm sorry. But I think that's a great report. Yeah, but it sounds like what I heard the most was. Let's get started with what's in the recommendations on the agenda, but always give options open to go to other places. Um, and uh, Daryl, let me just say that just some napkin calculations. Because the discussion also went into extending the sidewalk from where it is on Dave's Avenue. As it goes west from Poppy, although this is not in the agenda. But if we were to extend that throughout the western end of of Dave's Avenue to the S curve, fourteen hundred feet, correct? Oh, I'm sorry. I I'm just, I just, would you say that that's fairly at fourteen, fifteen hundred feet?
That's very close, yes.
Okay, great. And then we also talked about it being uh two hundred and fifty dollars a foot to put in a sidewalk. So we're looking at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's kind of not what we're talking about tonight. I love somebody who wants to bring this up, but it didn't, that's not what's in the agenda. So would we be even able to talk about that first thing as it's not in the agenda?
So we can talk about sidewalks, and um I would suspect that staff probably would need some time to come back with some details if we wanted to extend it that far.
Okay.
But it is something that you could direct staff to work in.
Okay, great. And so at this point, Councilmember Lottie, you look like you.
Well, I I guess the image you can set is we need to get started, do something. And then this was brought up last time, the council wanted it to be moved as quickly as possible. Because that's the place where it is ready for an accident to pop in. So if you just do a five oak ride on the S go, is that the fifteen hundred feet or that's not?
So it it's eight hundred, from what I measured, it's eight hundred feet to go from where the sidewalk ends on Dave's. To the beginning of the S curve, and then another six hundred feet to go from the eastern end of the S curve. To the western end of the S curve on the southern side of Dave's Avenue. So that would have one contiguous sidewalk. Now, I know that the plan was talking about the sidewalk on the northern end of the S curve.
So let's pick up on where the sidewalk is critical, which is just on the S go itself. How many people that?
The way I would address it, Council, and the, I started my career out in the late eighties, early nineties in traffic engineering. So I've been doing traffic engineering for decades. Um, what we normally look at first is where the dangerous pinch points of the corridor. We know where there are. We saw the pictures tonight where those dangerous points are. We would concentrate on those first. Make sure that there is a an area for a pedestrian or what have you to get away from the traffic lanes as best we could. And with this, with a with a constricted um budget, we'd have to address the pinch points first. And then fill in the gaps when we can have additional allocations for the council in the future. But those would be where. With my license as for public safety, number one, I would go to those two corners at the top and the bottom. Start there and see how much we can fill in between the two, and then eventually come back for more money with more projects and extend both directions. And for the projects.
I I I think that's great that you have had that experience. Because and that's where the problem is, right on the S go. Do what I need to do, put speed signs over there, put sidewalks on there. Uh, maybe put a reflectors or something else that doesn't really feel, or a a a light. Sign would not be that expensive to throw in there.
Exactly.
And get that started, and then come back to the council for doing sidewalks all the way down to Dave's.
Absolutely. The the way we explain it in in past projects is that you have a perfectly safe street today. If everybody would follow the speed limit, if everybody would follow the proper um speed issues out there, right? We wouldn't even have a problem, but that's just not reality. So we're going to have to implement one or all of the elements that were. That I presented or Mr. Megacek presented tonight. They would all enhance that. But at what time, what what's the best plan for this council, for this community right now? I would agree that the the speed tables would have a direct impact. And then as we do. As we develop that entire street with a new overlay, we re-stripe that with what we see in the striping tonight. The other enhancements we can talk about. But those would be um.
And Mr. Megacek is the one who really started this.
Oh, yeah.
Section of this whole project.
I appreciate that.
When the accident happened, and he kind of looked at it.
Absolutely.
Uh, he's moving it forward with the comprehensive approach. So.
Yeah.
Let's let's do it. The first step. I don't know what we can assume today, because I'd like to get something approved today. Do we have, if we have enough? Do we have, if we have enough information, so that we can start moving.
We won't know the exact extent of that sidewalk until we go to bid. So I would prefer that we get the allocation that council's already given the sixty thousand and see how far we can go with that, and come back at a later date to further.
That was as quick as possible.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes, when we, when, when we met, the Anheal Committee met, we're, we're city engineer. One of the things that I said to him was, and one of the things, the three things that were really important is, one, the safety of the residents and the people on going around the S curve. Second, we have to maintain our budget. And our budget at this time is sixty thousand dollars. And then the third is that we listen to the residents who live around the S curve. Those are the three things that we need to do. And tonight, I just want to say to you guys that I can feel and I can see the pain in each and every one of you, every one of you, all the residents on the S curve, the pain that you have to go through to, for safety, safety alone. Now, what I heard is that it is most important that we slow people down and that we maintain the rural characteristic of Montezarina. And, and that is very important. I, I, I've been on the council for almost eight years now, and every year, people tell me we have to have, we have to maintain the rural feel of Montezarina. So I think what we have to do here is do the biggest bang for what we have. So I would suggest that we take the recommendation of staff.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Megacek.
Behind you on the screen is where is the picture of the S curve. Mr. Jordan, if you could show us where you think the pinch points are in terms of a sidewalk, and where would you, where you would put those?
Down here where you saw the accidents happen, bottom of the curve, which are these driveways up to this driveway, this would be the first pitch point we would concentrate on. The second will be the top.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, go ahead.
Yeah, and then the second pitch point would be getting the pedestrians around this, this corner at the top, so putting in the sidewalk around up here, and getting it started here. We won't have enough money probably to connect those now until we come back with further funds, but we'll get pedestrians. There's plenty of room to walk here, and we have to put in a walkway here, it's a sidewalk. We can maybe grade this without putting in sidewalk for right now and keep them off the road. Um, if we had to save some money, oh, we had.
And how, how many feet do you estimate the inside of that one curve and the outside of the other curve, just ballparking it?
Thirty-foot radius typical curve. At least fifty feet on both corners. They get the sidewalk in along the curves. Here. Here, and at the bottom. It gets a little tricky with the driveways, because the sidewalks turn into different adiacent bollards.
And then, and then, are you talking about the inside curve all the way down to the in, inside curve on the southern side? Or, or, or are you just talking about around the radius?
We're talking two pinch points, the two dangerous spots.
Right.
Which will be a kid trying to come out here along the curb, jump out of here, and a kid trying out here.
Right, okay.
And then what about crossing the road at Via Vicaro or Via Cavalero?
That's not addressed in this plan.
Okay, so, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't address that?
We could do that with a striping plan, which we'd have annual funds to do striping, if we wanted to do a, a crosswalk at some point, but.
Okay, and how many feet, you think only fifty feet at the bottom of that S curve?
It's probably longer here, I haven't measured, to be honest with you, with councilmen, because we have to get through these, these driveways. So that's going to be the tricky part, there's going to be a little bit of a retaining wall behind us, too, because we have some grade issues, so.
Okay, and you wouldn't consider anything on the, on the other side?
Not, not for budget constraints at this time.
Okay, and, and then how would the sidewalk prevent a, a pedestrian from getting injured from that, from that collision that occurred on April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three?
That would happen with us can table editor. I did plastic stuff, and all, the speed tables, the only thing that would slow them down was this.
Okay, so and where would the speed tables go?
They'd be rounding this over here.
Yep.
And about the same distance on the top back up here. Good. Beyond the intersection.
And if the speed tables are twenty thousand each, that's forty, you would do that first before the sidewalk?
Ten thousand each.
Okay, I'm sorry, ten thousand each.
I would do those first, and then use the remaining budget to put as much sidewalk in as we could at this point, and come back to it later day for new project.
How long would it take to put in two speed tables? If from, from when you started to when they were installed?
Construction can be done within a week since we have a contract.
Okay, and then to get a contract, procurement side, what do you need, twenty-one days for that, or it's, it's less, it's less than twenty thousand dollars?
It's an informal bid, which is a different process, so it's further, so. But we can add it to the annual street paving project, which will decrease the mobilization cost, and maybe get a little bit more, more sidewalk, so.
Okay, fin, fin, final
Yeah.
question then, so if we were to approve the speed, two speed tables tonight, then you could come back and you would have everything you need, or sorry, you wouldn't have to come back. You could, you could go out and get those done, but then come back with a larger plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, for that case.
Okay, Councilmember Lohy. Yeah, I was, I was just doing the comparison business with numbers, and we had a number of matches where so you get this four, four-speed, okay, that was right.
Actually, two.
Two, two. Is, is, is it two on each side, or is it one on each side?
One at the top, one at the bottom.
Just, just in the direction of travel. Okay, so you've got twenty thousand on the speed tables.
Correct.
And then the sidewalk was two hundred and fifty per linear foot, and you said about a fifty feet at, at the bottom.
Yeah.
So that's a hundred feet, so fifty, two fifty times a hundred, that's about twenty-five thousand. So we are only at the twenty-five thousand plus twenty thousand, that's forty-five thousand. So we're in the budget.
Well, there's some, there's some retaining wall in there that I haven't necessarily put into that.
It sounded, still get it under sixty-five.
We could still get those two corners done and the speed tables put into that.
Yes, and, and the cycle. But we're in the budget at this point, so we could do, we could, it comes good if it was approved. Just going forward with that aspect of it.
Yeah, and then, well, so that's basically what is in the recommendation in the agenda is speed tables, extension of sidewalk, and a flashing speed sign. I got one that says a hundred percent support, that's, that's what my, that's what my agenda says.
There was support.
There was not a hundred percent support on this. We, we did have, Sarah Random, can you comment on that real quick about?
I can just clarify regarding the speed sign. So there was a hundred percent support for the tables um, and also for the sidewalk. The speed sign was brought up later, so people were not objecting to it, they are supportive of it, but it wasn't part of really a phase one, the phase one was the other two items.
So nobody's going to be disappointed if you don't get a flashing sign. Very good. All right, I got a thumbs down on that.
What, what about reflectors? You guys have any issues with reflectors?
All right, so it sounds like we're waiting for a motion to come in.
I, I'll make a motion after we hear the answers to the questions.
Okay, yeah, can we go through the list of questions, please?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Let me just say, I just did some quick calculations here. For the gentleman who asked about the width of the streets, I got, on the average, they're forty feet. Is that correct?
It's on the plan, it's on the plan.
So let's, let's, let's put it back up, there we show.
Is that the physical width or the right of way?
There we go, forty-foot right of way here in the middle of the street. That's, that's not the right of way, that is the back of curve.
Yeah.
Curve to curve, so there's eleven foot, we asked what size of the travel in were. With this design, there's an eleven-foot travel lane for cars both directions, a two-foot buffer lane striped, and then a seven-foot shoulder on each side. So total width from curve, back of curve to back of curve is forty feet, I believe it's a I don't, we have it up here, I thought we had it placed on here, but so, then along, we have more right, we have at least another five feet on both sides of the city right of way, so it's at least a fifty-foot wide if you were. So that extra five feet would be one of the sidewalk could be by the curve. So that would.
And that still gives us enough space for the trash when we help.
That's what you have right now.
Yeah.
So it works now, wouldn't.
Well, right now, where they're able to impede right into the inner lane, and maybe they'll.
Right, so if you didn't have this two-foot buffer, or two-foot buffer, you'd have a twelve-foot lane and an eight-foot shoulder, which is typical for a street. Twelve-foot for traveling, eight-foot for parking, or parking for whoever, end statement of the word. That was the first question. How wide is Dave's Avenue, the length? The second one was, why not just put a stop sign here, and everybody will stop? Well, short answer is, you have to meet warrants to put in a stop sign anywhere to have it legally binding, and those aren't necessarily easy to meet. And just because you put in a stop sign, there's this false sense of security that a stop sign will stop people, and people will abide by that stop sign. We're already talking about people who don't abide by traffic rules and traffic law, right? That stop sign would not have stopped that horrible accident probably. So sometimes when people just put stop signs in everywhere, that'll probably stop all of you here, but the people who don't want to follow traffic law, actually, they, they won't even stop with the stop signs. Maybe you've seen that in certain areas. People put a stop sign, it's not warranted, and then they're, and people just flow right through, because they don't think they need to be there. Third question was timeline. We can do that this summer. Who asked the timeline question? But we'd have to install this some, as far as the speed tables, and start the sidewalk, that was going to be done in the summer. How much, within sixty thousand dollars worth, so. Okay, those are the answers.
Great, and then I had one additional question. I noticed that we never really alert drivers that there's an S curve coming up. When you look at the sign, it's basically a sign that says a ninety-degree right turn.
Right.
If, would it be beneficial to maybe change that sign to say dangerous S curve or something ahead?
We could have. We could look into that.
Their challenge here.
Steve has annual budget for signage that we could have signage for.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious about that, because I noticed we never actually give people a warning that there's an S curve cut down. Yes, any matter?
I don't know if the public is familiar with it, but there is a term in Santa Cruz called the fish hook. And it's kind of where Highway seventeen goes off on the Highway one, and you'll see a sign with flashing, you know, lights that says curve sharpens, and it goes like this, and it's like a so something that would alert the public like that may be more beneficial, that shows the entirety of the turn.
Yes.
Although I'm sure people who drive fast cars love that sign, make them try to go as fast.
Yeah, oh, good, looks like I get to do.
Interference their future.
Okay, Councilmember Megacek.
All right, one of the issues that was raised was collection of trash. And I'm on West Valley Solid Waste Management Committee, uh, Management Authority, and we can request that West Valley Collection Recycling pick up the trash and the recycling and the yard waste, the organics, before eight o'clock on Thursdays. There's the trucks that are going through there, they, they run around and they try to get every cul-de-sac that has, that has um, uh, instruction on it, because they can't get a truck in if there's in, and out first thing in the morning. They, they try to do that. So, so that is an alternative that we could investigate and get done. So it's like no parking between, you know, six thirty AM and, and eight AM through the S curve, so that the trash can get picked up then, and we can prioritize that, when I say trash.
And, and can we get the woman who lost the top of her trash can and trash?
Yes, if you see the afterwards, we can, we can deal with that.
They get those feet.
With, with that, um I'd be willing to make a motion.
I would love to hear the motion.
So my motion would be to uh, put a, install a speed table at the east end on, and the west end of the S curve, and I'll just use the word S curve, uh, and put a sidewalk on the, on the south side of the, of the, of the S curve at the westbound portion and the eastbound portion. And I think those are the two things that the residents all wanted without the um light, and then I would, so I'm sorry, I should have made a comment first. The one gentleman said, when you put the reflectors on and they're not on the, on the lines, you always hear that click, 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 click. And what, what I do, I, I don't like that noise, so I go to one side or the other. But those reflectors can go right on the yellow lines and the white lines. They don't have to be offset. So you will be able to avoid hitting them easily in an eleven-foot lane where you can't if, if they're offset. So I would include it, so that's kind of back home, but in my, in my motion, I would say that we put in the reflectors uh, for the, 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 for the white lines and the yellow lines included in that.
Okay.
And that in our annual budget, we include the funds to replace reflectors that are damaged or missing.
The last, look.
That's my motion.
So we have a motion, and it's just real fast, I'm sorry, this is a little unusual, but I thought I heard thumbs up or thumbs down on the reflectors on the street.
They disappear, that's in no time.
What if we promise to replace them?
No. How much do they cost?
More than you think. They cost four dollars each, plus the piece.
Come on up, Liz.
All right.
I closed public comment, but
Thank you.
speak at a special session.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. Um, at the Better Streets Commission, we talked about this. Obviously, our residents want the speed tables, and they want the sidewalks. It sounds like they don't want the reflectors. Um, and I think we talked about phase, this project having phases, and so phase one would be the speed tables and the sidewalks. And then over several months' time, we can gauge and gather information, how effective is this? If we determine that it's not effective enough, then we go to phase two, which would then include striping and reflectors and potentially other modifications. That is what I have to say, so clearly, we know what they want.
Yes, thank you so much. Yeah.
Help us, our city attorney, to phrase the motion, so that we can vote on it.
Well, wait a second. I want to see, first of all, is will the motion maker take a friendly amendment to remove the reflectors?
I think we need a second first.
Or do we need to, well, I was going to second with that friendly amendment.
I second, and then you make the, the amendment.
Okay, so I second it with, with the stipulation of removing the reflectors.
So when I looked at the detailed budget that Naomi.
Just, just, go ahead.
Okay. It's sixty, our budget is sixty K, and we said that the it'd be five K to do the prep of the area and board of the striping that we may or may not need. Then we said, how much was the?
Table for ten thousand.
The speed, the speed tables? Twenty thousand, two times like that.
Yeah, so twenty thousand.
And then we said.
Twenty-five thousand for the sidewalk.
Twenty-five?
Yeah.
So I think we still have some money there for.
Can we move the motion first?
Sign, signage, so I would prefer to keep the, the reflectors in, because, because Naomi said, it's not just a single thing, you need all these different, different elements, and, and the striping is the least expensive.
So, so we have a second to use on friendly amendment, you did not accept the friendly amendments.
And I withdraw my.
Then you withdraw your.
Then you withdraw your second.
So anyone else?
No, I was there.
Okay, the motion is to install. Um, at the east and west end of the S curve, speed table. And include sidewalks on the south side. Wait, on the west and eastbound um parts of the S curve. So, voted by council member Mecklenburg and seconded by council member Alah. I'll go ahead and. So there's no reflectors.
No, there are.
Wait, sorry, wait for the white and yellow on the white and yellow ones.
Is there any comment on the motion? Uh, I will just say that I will not be supporting this. Because I really want to respect the wishes of the community and the community has given a pretty unanimous thumbs down on reflectors. So I I will not be supporting this. At this point though, if there's no more comments?
I got a comment.
Nope, sorry. Other comments, please. All right.
So can we call the bill, please? Just just just.
Go ahead.
So we need to call for, we need to call for the motion first and then you can be clearly now, but.
I'm just gonna accept your friendly amendment.
But you already accepted, you already seconded it.
Okay.
Councilor Turner, you know? Councilor Perkins, Mecklenburg.
Yes. Hi.
Councilor Baraki?
Hi.
And Vice Mayor Craig?
No.
So the motion fails to pass. So we have a new motion.
So now we can take a new. I'll make the new motion. Where the reflectors are included in the next phase. Okay, same motion, reflectors if it is in the next phase, is in the next phase and it looks like it's the next thing that needs to be done to calm traffic. Okay.
It's found a general for device, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
For the second phase?
Well, we were saying if there is a second phase, we're only voting on the first phase. So there is no reflectors on the first phase. Let's let's keep it simple. We're only voting for. Speed table sidewalks on the south side at the at the inside and the outside curve. Okay, do I have a second?
Yes, that's what I.
I'll make that. That's that's what the motion. All right, second member Alahi has seconded it. Can we call a vote, please? Any discussion? Any other discussions, questions?
There are no reflectors here.
There is no reflect.
Councilor Alahi?
Aye.
Councilor Turner? Yes. Council member Mecklenburg?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes. Okay, motion carries four zero. I would really like to thank the members of the public for coming out and giving us accurate and very, very good information. Come back to phase two, okay? I promise we'll keep it shorter. Yeah, I'm gonna call five hundred pieces.
And thanks for.
Yeah.
Carol.
Yes.
Very, very, very.
I know three.
Sorry, there we go, we're back.
Are we all in?
We're on right now.
Okay. Anybody have any announcements they would like to make? Seeing none. More than presentation, we have no presentations today.
No.
Oral communications. For persons wishing to address, wishing to address the council on any matter of city business not listed on the agenda. Is there anybody here that? No, there is somebody in the room, but you didn't know.
I have no comments.
So anybody attending remotely who wishes to address the council?
We do have points online, but none are reading their hands.
Right. Grits and communications, we received five or six about the S curve. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Moving on to consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull up any items from the consent calendar? Council member turns.
Yeah, I'd like to, I think it's item two on the consent calendar, right?
Yeah. All right. What we will do then is we have only two.
And if you separate one.
So the first item on the consent calendar is approve the warrant this dated May seventh. So anybody in public who wishes to comment on the warrant list dated May seventh? Anybody? In that case, is there a motion to approve that item?
Move to approve?
A second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, anybody wishes to abstain? So we have five yeses and one council member abstaining.
Four.
Four, one, four zero one. The next item is the Google the minutes of April sixteenth.
Yeah, I have a comment about that. The, the, it says the council provided staff direction to work with an architect, redesign the project and return to the council with alternatives or new designs, including a financial forecast of the city's reserves at the completion of the project. A list of what the building should be used for and a poll of at least a hundred residents. I'd like to add there just to come back with an operating expense. And you agreed to that at the last meeting. And I, I think our city engineer is stuck and worked with them to determine that. You know, how, how long we're going to hold office, right? Is it going to be from eight o'clock till eight o'clock at night? Are we going to include weekends? Are we going to hire more people? Are we going to have more janitors? Are we going to have to do all those things? And if we have, we have cooking sessions, are we going to buy the plates and, and, and everything else, right?
I think you're right, that was mentioned, the problem is we, we sort of have a chicken and an egg situation, chicken and egg situation here. We don't know what we're going to build. So we don't know what the facility will allow us to do there. So it's hard to make an estimate of the cost, but I think there could be an estimate.
Yeah, because if we, if we hire three more people, that's six hundred thousand dollars.
So it was, it was part of the discussion or the motion, so we'll include it in the minutes. And then I think when the item comes back, there'll be a discussion about how do we give you those operating costs?
Yeah, just trying to operate even expenses in there.
I'll add it and include that.
I move that we accept the item with the changes mentioned. All second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous.
I, I think we're getting too much into the maybe here, let's get the master plan approved. I mean, if they're going to start saying we can't have two plates and we can't have two this and two that. It doesn't make sense to me at this point, I think we're getting too much. The plan is for a community center to build it, not for every little staff person that will be there. You know, whether they're going to have a quality or not. So I'm going to think that I think we need to focus on building the community center and then we can discuss it. What, you know, how do we need to staff it? What kind of operations required? City manager can decide what kind of staff that need to add to it. Rather than this micro management.
When you open the business, you have to know.
So this is actually just, so the only item we're discussing right now is should the minutes be amended to reflect what happened at the meeting? So that, the issue was discussed, so it could correctly be included in the, in the minutes. It doesn't mean we've done anything about or made decisions about it, that's something that will be included. But tonight it's just should the minutes be amended to include that.
As if you want to amend, makes sense because that was discussed and we.
So at this point, is your vote still in?
Yes.
So like so four, zero, one?
Four, one, zero.
One, one.
One, zero, zero.
All right. Moving on. And unfinished business, I think we finished the unfinished business, public hearings, we don't have any public.
We do, we do. Most exciting item of the night.
So that's item number four.
Yes.
Item number four on the agenda is adopt a new resolution to amend the general plan by adopting the twenty twenty three thirty thirty one housing elements. There is a staff report in this?
Yes, thank you. I'm giving the mayor, councilor, same Dana Perkins, the city planner. And the housing element is part of the city's general plan and identifies policies and programs to meet the housing needs of the city's current and future residents. Housing elements are written and adopted by local governments. However, housing elements must be certified by the state department of housing and community development. On HCD reviews and certifies that each jurisdiction of housing element meets all of the requirements of state law. Under current state laws, housing elements are updated every eight years. Over the past two years, staff in the city's consultant team has been working to update the city's house housing element for the sixth cycle, which covers the planning period from twenty twenty three through twenty thirty one. This process has included extensive community and public meetings, multiple revisions to the housing element itself, and several meetings with HCD staff. HCD completed the review of the fourth submittal of the housing element on April twenty second and determined that the document was in substantial compliance with state laws. The next step is for the city council to adopt the housing element. That if adopted, that resolution would then be submitted to HCD for final certification. Staff are in months of the city council adopt the draft resolution attached to the staff report to amend the general plan by adopting the twenty twenty three through twenty three one housing element. That completes the staff report and we'll be happy to answer the questions.
Thank you for the report. First of all, let me congratulate you, especially the entire staff reaching this major milestone. I know that was a tough battle. Frustrating at times, many setbacks, but so congratulations again to the entire, especially city planner who spent hours and hours reaching this goal. City man, city councilman, any questions?
No questions.
No questions. What do we, questions first? Any questions? Then we will question.
I guess I, I got to convert you also. I, yeah, my question is some, some of the report, when you look at it, it talks about discrimination and segregation within Montessorino. And I don't see any patterns of segregation as discrimination within Montessorino. I'm not sure where that cropped in, or is that just part of a boilerplate that these consultants are using for everything? We talked about, you know, the Montessori residential areas and it's segregation, but really there isn't any. So I don't, I don't know if you can answer that or not, but.
So it is a statutory requirement from the state that the housing elements include an analysis of past zoning and development restrictions that may have been discriminatory in the past and how that has affected the current development pattern of the city. There's also a requirement for the city to address the racially concentrated areas of affluence, which is a metric that's based on the census data as well as income amounts. And that has placed Montessorino into that category, so they are requirements from the city.
Yeah, I understand that this, are you talking about racist pattern within the city or you're doing, doing it on a regular basis? I mean, Montessorino across the city, there aren't any racist patterns because like you've got concentration of racist concentration in different areas, it's.
It's not necessarily the current status situation within the city. It's the historical context that has resulted in the current development patterns that we see today here being similar in the homes.
Yeah, but not with, once here has it happened, but I'm just going to suggest this is already done and you, you, you worked hard on it, there's not much you can do about it. Just, just to kind of be mindful of the blanket statements that were in this report says it. You know, we're a racist community and there's patterns of racism. We, we don't have that in Montreal as far as I know. And I don't know if you ever had it, something where.
Just another, just kind of a follow up, I, I think I saw this also happen in Los Gatos, didn't they go through the same thing? And it sounds like that they just kind of went through some of the smaller cities, especially in our area. And Saratoga and Cupertino also got hit with it too, right?
Or being deemed the racially concentrated areas of affluence, yes.
Yeah. Sure.
And in fact Cupertino, they told them that they were not mixed racially because they had too many Chinese.
I know. Well, thank you so much for getting the report done and staying on top of it again.
Can I make my comment?
We're still doing questions.
We're still.
And then we'll do a public comment and then we'll, we'll do a comment. Any questions? No, I have a question, actually, when is the first checkpoint? I know there are several milestones between now and twenty thirty one, but what is the first checkpoint? And what do we have to achieve by that time?
So each of the programs that are in chapter two have a specific timeframe. Whether they're either annually of their ongoing efforts or if it is an item, you know, that just has a deadline to be completed. And then we do have to report on the status of the number of new units as well as the status of each program annually with our annual progress report. And that usually comes to the council in March or April of each year, so we'll see that next year. And I have heard some discussion that the state may be doing some mid-cycle check-ins.
So it would be.
So in about three weeks, yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Unless there are any further questions, we opened it up for a public comment. Anybody in chambers here who wishes to comment or question? Questions about the report, anybody online? All right, then we'll bring it to council for comments.
I'll make a motion after comments. My only comment is this has been extremely difficult, we've spent a lot of resources as our neighboring cities and other cities in Northern California have. And I'm delighted we're on this side of it. So I'd be willing to make a motion after comment.
Sure. Any comment or one?
Can I make a comment? Okay, I, I just wanted to, to, to talk to staff. You know, we've been doing, you've done an excellent work throughout this entire process. This has been a battle that we, we have fought for more than two years, probably three years. And, and this has been about so much more than satisfying the requirements of the law. We did that a long time ago. Okay, this is about satisfying the arbitrary and often capricious requirements of HCD operating under the color of law. And they knew very little about Montessorino, they called us a racist city. Our residents were more affluent than HCD thought we should be. Okay? And they wanted us to mold into something that none of us wanted. And I think the most important thing is that you stood in the breach, right? You were in the uninducible position of having to find ways to placate HCD while protecting the character of Montessorino and minimizing the damage that these bureaucrats or politicians could do. So I want to thank you for your patience, your diligence and your creativity. Okay, I want to thank you for the hundreds of hours of efforts that you gave to bring us to this conclusion. And I truly mean that because I've seen you do, doing this. Hopefully the worst of our nightmare is over. Although we still have to deal with the reporting and the other commitments made in this three hundred plus pages. And we hope that there will not be many major surprises going forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
For a comment?
I, I got a follow up, I, I, I think you guys have done a busy job. The thing that prevented staff probably from working for board is considering all this to make sure Montessorino maintains its character. We don't believe anything else. It's the worst thing you would be to do that could affect Montessorino's ability to maintain its character. That is not be approved in this plan.
I'm not sure I would classify it as the worst thing, but I would say probably the the biggest change is, or the potential change, I should say, is the committing to rezoning two lots using SB ten to allow for up to ten units per lot. And so we will begin working on that in the next few months and, and bringing that back to council for consideration.
And do those, do, do those people know what the, what it changed?
We have reached out to them in the past and not heard back, so we will make additional efforts.
I mean, they've, they've been notified that their lots may be changed or have been changed.
Are considered for a change, yes. And like I said, we didn't hear, we didn't receive a response, but we will make more.
And we haven't changed them yet. We're supportive, James.
That will be brought back to our council's decision.
Hopefully you will be, hopefully you will be like that last one.
Um, I'd like to make the motion. And the motion is to adopt a resolution to amend the general plan by adopting the twenty twenty three to thirty, thirty, twenty thirty one housing element. As in the staff report.
If you have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. I think we have to do a roll call going on this one definitely.
Councilmember Beckett.
Aye.
So member Alahi.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Who carries?
Thanks. Congratulations again. From the new business, I run with five, we have item of serving adoption of a resolution declaring hazardous vegetation a public nuisance. And all these two areas are staff involved.
Oh, you want me to?
What?
I thought you were volunteering.
Oh, no.
Okay. All right, so the city annually declares hazardous vegetation as brush as a public nuisance to the fire danger and enters into a contract along with other municipalities in Santa Clara County to abate the hazardous vegetation, not removed by property owners. The focus of this program is to identify the perennial vegetation brush trees and is a muted pipe and fire hazardous areas. The Santa Clara County Fire Department implements and manages the hazardous brush abatement program for the wildland urban interface areas such as the hillside areas. But then jurors, jurist, jury did. It's not helping.
Where'd you go?
Oh, I'm right over here. Thank you.
So the Santa Clara County Fire Department implements and manages a hazardous brush abatement program for the wildland urban interface areas within the jurisdictional boundaries, which includes the incorporated area of Montessorino to provide defensible space for structures. The city annually adopts the hazardous vegetation abatement program and works with the county who serves as the enforcement agent and conducts their own inspections. In February of each year, every property owner with a designated fire hazardous severity zone is notified that they must remove brush and vegetation from around their home to create defensible space. The brush abatement program entails inspections of hillside properties by fire crews beginning early April of each year. If properties are found to not be in compliance with the regulations found in the California Fire Code and the enforced applicable wildland fire safety regulations relative to vegetation clearance, they are given notice of the violation. If compliance is not achieved by January, sorry, June first each year, then they will be referred to the contractor authorized to perform the necessary work. A public hearing is set for the city council on June eighteenth, where all property owners in the wildland urban interface fire area having any objections to the proposed abatement of brush will be heard and given notice and due consideration. Additional inspection of all identified properties will be conducted after the hearing prior to ordering any abatement work. The costs associated with the abatement work are part of work are then placed on the property tax bill for that parcel. Staff is recommending that you approve the resolution declaring hazardous vegetation a public nuisance and providing for abatement and more available to insert any question. We do this every day.
Thank you. Any questions about this? I didn't.
I have a question. Um, could you post a list of, on our website, the several companies that offer this service? So, so that if a resident needed to do something on their own, they could clear brush?
So I believe that they're given an opportunity in February to do the work themselves. We passed that now, so now we're dealing with those that when they finish the inspections in April, if they haven't done the work, then they will be listed on the abatement notice and then the county will actually have the work performed by the contractors that, that they select.
So is this the same list we would get every year that normally had eight or nine people on it?
Yes.
And there's, looks like there's over two hundred of them on here this.
So this is the early stage, so that's just they go through the area. Everybody gets on it, so what the list you're talking about, you'll see in June.
We'll see that list next.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that list, I'm like, oh.
Last year, actually, we were there, we didn't have anybody on the list last year. And so far from my last home station, they didn't have anybody so far, so.
Great, your house. Any further questions? My wife has been growing a lot this year. Well, if there are no other questions, then we will open this up for public comment. Is there anybody in chambers? Please, I'm just, so for those of you, those of us who don't know.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Lisa Shannon, I live at one six two zero six Rose Avenue. I was not expecting to speak on this topic, but and I knew it was on the agenda, but I just wanted to make a comment because this defensible space issue, I as a resident get those letters every year. My home right next door is designated in a high fire area and I get notified that I have to keep seventy five feet of defensible space around my house. My entire lot is seventy five feet wide. I have contacted the county fire and asked them questions about this and sort of after calling several times, the answer I got was it's just a designation, you are in the high fire area, this is just the rule. So I'm only bringing it to your attention so that you're aware that people like me are getting these notices that really don't make any sense. I'm not concerned that I'm going to get, you know, a letter saying you didn't clear your space, but a little help in digging deeper as to what these notices are that the residents are receiving would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. So anybody online who wishes to comment?
No.
Bring it back to council then, if there are any, any comment?
I, I don't have any comments, but I'll, I'd make a motion.
Okay. You have more questions?
Okay. I reckon, or I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to declaring hazardous vegetation a public nuisance.
All right, is there a second?
A second, that sounds crazy. Dumb.
Do we need to adopt this every year?
We do it every year.
Do we need to do that? Can it just be a standing?
Every year, we have, that part of the program is that we have to do it every year.
For the cities actually.
Just add to that, to the motion, also include providing for abatement.
Providing for abatement. Before, we have a second. No, I'm sorry, sorry. Before we call the vote, does this, could this motion have been put on consent?
From what I've seen in history, it's always a topic of discussion. Because if someone wants to speak on it.
It could be somewhat controversial.
Okay, fine, let's move on, yeah.
All right. I think it's a resolution, so I think we need to do a roll call.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckett.
Aye.
Councilmember Alahi.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Craig?
Yes.
And me, Wolfheimer.
Yes. Motion carries five, zero, zero. Moving on, next item on the agenda is committee and commission reports. Let's just do it in order, it's shown on the agenda here, you won't question your credit.
Okay, so we had a very successful first annual keep our city pretty cleanup, thank you so much to our city manager for his yellow bags and voice coming out and helping out and the volunteers that we had and the council members who came out. Councilmember Abner, Wolfheimer and Councilmember Brian Deckerchuk. So it was great to have the, the cyber truck rolling around the city, just got a, got a little charge out of that, so. We did have a youth commission meeting where we discussed ways that we could enhance the vitality of the youth commission and hopefully next year we will have a more, a more energetic youth commission. And for the Santa Clara County JPA, we're saying goodbye to our chief financial officer Chuck. After thirty four years of public service, he's leaving us. Going to miss that guy. And we passed a budget, so. I'll make it short this week.
Thank you. Councilmember Alon.
Hello, I, I don't have any, any committee reports. Or I did want to report on seeing the fall guy.
What?
Correct.
On the fall guy, Los, Los Gatos theater has a special program. First Monday of the month, month, they're doing a movie at ten o'clock, okay, ten o'clock, which is attended by a lot of service organization, Rodeo Chamber, all the, all the Los Gatos city council people are there. Which is attended by a lot of service organization, Rodeo Club, Chamber, uh, all the all the Los Gatos City Council people are there. So I'm sure we should keep a track of that too. So yeah, about seven people watching that movie ten o'clock in the morning.
It's good movie of the community. I thought you were gonna give us a movie review.
It's a good movie. If you like bang, bang, any of that kind of stuff. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner. Nothing to report. Um. I'm like on the list here. Um, Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority, there's a exciting development there. Los Gatos has voted to join the JPA. Uh, they were under contract with the city of San Jose before and have decided to join Silicon Valley Animal Control. They're currently revising the JPA and looking at the cost. It looked like if there are more. Possibly go down. This is shared among more more cities. So that's very positive. They probably get this done by July first.
How would the sharing cost is it by population numbers? How how are the exchange costs?
Five population, yeah. They have a.
And you still get one vote.
Formula. We get one vote.
Okay. Obviously, you get one vote.
Sarah against two votes.
Okay, very good. Okay, so.
All the other cities get one vote. I don't know how that can happen, but it's.
They have more animals than Sarah.
Uh, West Valley mayors and managers, we met a couple of weeks ago. And uh, it was an interesting lunch, but the meeting itself was a, I'm sure we call it a fail. Because it was held in a very noisy public restaurants right in the middle. With um, our guests from the cities association trying to give a presentation about new uh laws and regulations in California. So that was that did not work. So we're doing it again next week. That's uh, systol systems, actually. And we have a project room there, so we can all follow the the presentation. Uh, that was all I have. Councilmember, thank you.
Uh. First of all, I'm away next week traveling internationally. Um. And so I want I did want to say that uh, the BTA Policy Advisory Committee meets this week on Thursday. Uh, West Valley Clean Water Authority, uh, we're considering a name change and we gave staff direction to to think that through and come up with some some proposals. And I believe the leading recommendation is West Valley um, Storm Drain Authority. So differentiating ourselves from water. Uh, West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority, uh, we are meeting the fourth week in May and we're gonna pass a we're gonna consider passing a budget and approving uh, some new rates. Silicon Valley Clean Energy, the uh, executive committee met last week in anticipation of the board meeting that's being held tomorrow. Um, they're coming up with some new programs, uh, and I will leave it at that. Uh.
Thank you. So it's committee and commission reports. Next on the agenda is council member comments. If anybody wishes to comment on whatever you want to comment on. Nothing. Nothing. City government.
Hello, mayor and council. Just wanted to make the council aware that the normal picnic site that we get, the circle site up at uh, the Sonora Park is not available to us this year. Um, they want to put us over there by the boat uh, voting area um, in that parking area, which they said is better to accommodate us because of the size of our event and the amount of vehicles and vendors or agency partners that we we have invited. So I just wanted to give you an early heads up on that. Um, and we will be communicating that message to uh, the residents as the picnic approaches, so they all get to the right place. So. Who who controls that park? Is that a county park or a city park? At Santa Clara County Parks.
Have you been to the new location?
Yes, I am familiar with that new location. Essentially, you access it off of University Avenue. And there's a street. I can't remember the name of the street, but you go right down into and it's a, as I mentioned, pretty close to where they have the boat docks.
There's really no meadow or anything there, correct?
Oh, there are grassy areas. There's picnic tables. It it may even have more shade than what it recues.
It has a lot of shade.
That that area. So that might be a good thing for us. Um, their main point to us was it had adequate parking to accommodate us because last year, I guess our event was very robust and they saw that and um we kicked and screamed a little bit, but we don't want to blow our opportunity with the county. We don't.
Is is there still an opportunity to bring the fire truck in and stuff like that?
Well, I certainly think that's why they wanted us to have that bigger. They called it a larger parking area to around videos.
Okay.
Well, that's all.
That was it. Thank you. Future agenda items.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Okay. I want to talk about SB nine and local control. Okay, I want to briefly bring up Senate Bill SB nine for lead of state here, which became effective January first uh, twenty twenty two as it relates to the lawsuit filed by the charter cities. And there were five charter cities that filed a lawsuit. Redondo Beach, Torrance, Carson, Whittier, and Del Mar. And I would like to specifically address some of the areas that could affect Monteserino and ask our city attorney and our city planner to look into to look into this to determine if there might be some benefit to what I'm gonna suggest. So effective on March first, twenty twenty two, the SB nine bill allowed single family properties to take where there was one residence and split the lot and build three residential units in each lot, a total of six. And uh, many of the local elected officials from both SCAG and A-BAG uh, felt that this was a significant overreach by the state legislature. Okay. In fact, Monteserino was one of the eighty two California cities. Six hundred and seventy seven local elected officials. This was the previous councils that have passed resolutions in support of protecting local control. This was done unanimously by the previous council, not this council, the previous council. And so last week I attended a meeting with Pam Lee of Elshire and Winder, the lead attorney for the cities that who filed um, against the California Attorney General in the state. And there were a hundred elected officials in at that meeting. The court ruled that SB nine violated the California Constitution and therefore did not apply to charter cities because SB nine was not reasonably related to its stated purpose of ensuring affordable housing and not narrowly tailored to avoid interference with local government. Well, Monteserino is not a charter city. Monteserino is a general law city. In the Bay Area, we have Alameda, Berkeley, Emeryville, uh, San Rafael. They're all charter cities. Okay, so what's really unique about charter cities? Charter cities seem to have the right to manage their own municipal affairs. And municipal affairs refers to the internal business of the city. Land use zoning is one. It's a municipal affair. This is how we might be able to mitigate some of the damage done to this new housing loss. And there are going to be a thousand laws on housing coming down the pipe. So this right of charter city is not absolute. The state can actually overcome it, but there is a process. So first, the state has to to declare that the issue in question is a statewide issue and not restricted to the cities in question. So that's the first thing. Second, the bill or law that the state wants must actually address the problem identified the state by the state. And finally, the law must be narrowly tailored such that it minimum it is minimally intrusive to the city's management of its own affairs. So text of SB nine states that its purpose is to produce affordable housing. The cities argued and the judge agreed that SB nine does not produce affordable housing. The data shows that it produces market rate housing, not affordable. So the bill failed that test. Okay. Then the cities argued that SB nine was not narrowly tailored, but broadly affected all their land use policies. The judge agreed. Right? And declared SB nine unconstitutional when it applied to charter cities. So what I conclude is that there seems to be some protection in the law for charter cities against interference from the state and taking away local control. And that's important local control because Monteserino is a general law city. SB nine for us is ministerium. Right? So there's nothing we can do. Somebody says SB nine, yes, it's ministerium. Now Pam Lee indicated that it would take about eighteen to twenty four months for a general law city to convert to a charter city. We would also have to put in in a ballot for the voters of Monteserino to vote on this. I would like to suggest that we do some investigation and this is where our city attorney and our city planner can can work on and consider whether it makes sense to convert to a charter city. Is it beneficial? What are the pros? What are the what are the cons? Right? And then we can figure out uh, what kinds of changes do we have to make, come up with and and talk to our residents about it. Uh, we should understand that that becoming a charter city has implications beyond beyond just gaining some protections from the state overreach. So I would like, you know, your comments about this. Uh, I I think it will be worthwhile. Uh, there's no pressure to do this by any any time that both of you can actually look into, you know, what does it take to become a charter city and how much will it cost us? So that's my future agenda item.
So is the question, I think, is clear. Um, I don't know how much of an effort that is to investigate this. And when we can add it to the uh, the council agenda. If we wanted to. That's another question.
Yeah, if we want to. But I I gotta tell you, most of the most of the elected officials in there in that meeting, there were a hundred of them were very interested in trying to figure out charter cities because of that loss like SB nine coming down.
And and we can look into that and come back with the process. I will note that in that case, um, the court sort of telegraphed that there's a way that the state could fix it so that it would apply to charter cities and that would just they would have to key into the affordable requirements. So if SB nine required affordable housing, um, then that would it would be subject to them. So as we've learned over the last two years, this is a game we'll continue to play with the state and we think we solve something and then they throw something else at us, but it is we can we can look into it.
Yeah. But yeah, I think it's a good suggestion, but I would just keep it in the back. We're such a small city. There's gonna be other general law cities who are interested and we can, you know, try to court tales once they investigate it all out rather than spending a lot of time.
There are four other cities who are now charters, general law cities who who challenged SB nine and lost in last.
Yeah, okay, so. And also this charter city lawsuit is gonna go up on appeal and we don't know what that is gonna happen. We should probably write somebody's court tale. So as long as we're aware of what's going on.
I'll be at the city attorneys conference starting tomorrow and I'm sure it will be a topic of discussion. So
Yeah.
I'll bring you. I'll get you some more information.
Okay, so maybe in one of the future agendas, we can add you as a
Yeah, whenever you're ready.
Give a coffee on the latest developments and what are the chances of actually doing this for other benefits?
That's on your line.
Thank you.
Your left, both of you.
Any other uh, future agenda items anybody would like to suggest? No? In that case, um, that takes care of the standard um, open forum agenda, if you will. I mean, we will now reassess the closed session.
We'll revisit this to the position. Would you like to open it before the comment? For anybody interested in commenting on the conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, go on the section five four nine five six point nine. Case name, uh, Pageant versus Curtis Wright.
Sir, anybody in
See case.
Chambers here who wish to comment on this item? No, is anybody following? No? In that case, we will reassess the closed session. Conference with legal counsel on existing litigation.
Does anyone have a charger for?
You're back.
You're back.
That's now that you're back.
A little bit.
Are we ready?
Are we in black on line?
We're back on one.
All right, we are back from our closed session and we are reconvening to open session. There is nothing to report from the closed session. And with that I will adjourn the session of the Most window city council at ten twenty P M.